This meeting of North City Council is hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, is the body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance, that they may do all things well according to thy holy will.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal, here. Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Thompson, here. Ms. Stevenson.
President.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Here.
Mr. Sankar.
Mr. Breeden.
Here.
Do I have six members present, so we will proceed. We have some requests to amend the agenda. The first two are simply under Communications 1 and 2, those bank reconciliation reports are from Tim Maloney, Treasurer, and not Jim Stith. So if you can just change that. We have a request to add a communication from Kelly Brown regarding June monthly financials. And Communication number five, a letter from Jim Stith regarding 2018 post-audit meeting. And the Chair recognizes that Mr. Sankar is here. Thank you. Those are the requests to amend the agenda. Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we amend the agenda as stated.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President. Is the letter from Mr. Stith here in council chambers?
It's on your desk?
It is.
No, it's just that two copies.
I'm sorry, it was on my desk. Do we need this?
I can run make copies.
Can you run these off for people? It's just simply about the 2018 post-audit meeting, letting us know the dates. We'll make copies of those.
Thank you.
It was on my desk, and I assumed everyone had it. I apologize for that. It's my mistake.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to amend the agenda as previously stated. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have the minutes of the June 25, 2019 meeting. They were distributed via email. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve the minutes as of read.
Seconded by Ms. Stevenson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We move on to recognition of Sergeant Mike Borchers and his partner Amor. Chief Kramer, would you like to come forward, please?
Welcome. Thank you. Appreciate you.
This is turning into the best part of our meeting. So I think we need to have those come in every meeting to start our meetings.
Absolutely. So I guess with the last meeting, we were here with Phil Harvey and Bo as our newest K-9 officers. We're here tonight to recognize Mike Borchers and his partner Amor for all the work they've done. They're winding down now. Mike, I think, was it 2012? Was that it? Yeah, 2012. You know, we talked about all the training that Phil went through, and obviously Mike went through that same training. He's been doing this a long time, and the training doesn't stop when they graduate from the K-9 academy. It's a continual thing, every week, every other week.
It's been almost 16 hours.
Yeah, and then all the care at home and everything else. I can, real quick, I will mention, I had the Havercamps here last time. The Havercamps are responsible for Amor. In addition, when we got Amor, we also had a grant from the Roethlisberger Foundation to help pay for the training. Not a Steelers fan, I never will be, but I am a fan of Roethlisberger's Foundation. So I can tell you that in my time as Chief and in Mike's time as the K-9 officer, that he has always been willing to do anything that we've asked him to do. Any event we need him to come to, he is more than willing to show up. I know Mike gets called out quite a bit. Claremont County, is that right? Sometimes he calls you a lot to help with drugs, sniffs. He's just a dedicated K-9 officer, and can't thank him enough for all the work that he's done. So I just wanted to take tonight and recognize Mike and Amor if they want to step up here.
Now, could you please?
Mike, if you want to say anything?
Yeah, I want to, first of all, I want to thank my wife for supporting me in this long endeavor. This is no easy task. It's a lot of time and commitment, and, you know, time away from the family. She's been a huge support for me the whole time. So I just want to throw that out there and thank her and my kids.
And I asked you previously, but I think maybe the people at home would be interested. How old is Amor, and how long has he been on the job? And is that pretty typical about the number of years that he's been on the job?
Yeah, Amor is a nine-year-old German Shepherd. He came from Amsterdam. He's been on the road for about seven years now, which is pretty typical for a police dog. Just depends on their health normally, on how long they go. So sometimes they go longer, sometimes, you know, they don't. Just, like I said, just depending on their health.
And you had to learn Dutch commands.
I did, yeah. He's a dual-purpose K-9, so he's trained to find drugs, and he can also track if somebody's hiding in a building, he can find somebody in a building. And then he does handle perfection. So if somebody was to try to assault me on the street, he would step in and take care of them.
Comments, questions from council? Mr. Sankar.
What's he going to do now?
He's just going to be a normal house dog, lay around, watch the TV, just enjoys retirement.
So he may just kind of come up to you sometimes and say, hey, let's go out and sniff some out, or let's go.
Yeah, he might. Yeah, I'm sure he'll go kind of crazy for a while, but we'll still do some training and stuff like that, just to keep him up to date and so he doesn't get completely crazy.
Well, thank you so very much for what you do. It's so cool, and I just appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good morning.
I asked if he was going to collect early social security since he's like 63, so again, thank you so much. So we have no request to address council nor standing committee reports. So we'll move on to second reading of ordinances, and that is an ordinance amending Section 1305.05 fees of the codified ordinances of the city of Norwood, Ohio, to waive certain fees for handicapped accessible ramps. Mr. Thompson.
I would move that we have the second reading of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the second reading.
An ordinance amending Section 1305.05, fees of the codified ordinances of the city of Norwood, Ohio, to waive certain fees for handicapped accessible ramps.
Move on to introductory readings of ordinances and resolutions. The first is an ordinance creating and establishing the Norwood Agency Fund 33 Employee Flex Spending Account and declaring an emergency. Mr. Stith, would you care to, I know what this is about, but would you care to let council know where this originated and why?
Yes, Madam President. The city has hired a third-party administrator to offer our employees a flexible spending account where they can put money out of every paycheck into an account to be used for medical expenses, or childcare, or a number of other purposes. In order to manage that money, which is deducted from the paychecks and then sent to the third-party administrator, we really need to create a fund that the money goes, once it's deducted from the payroll, into a separate fund where it can be managed and earmarked only to be used for those expenditures. And then on a monthly basis, the third-party administrator sends us a bill, and the money's transferred out of that fund to the company itself that manages that.
Thank you, Mr. Stith. Mr. Breeden.
Thank you, Madam President. For what reasons are you letting us take it out of paychecks?
Mr. Stith.
It's a voluntary election by the employee that they can pre-tax, take a certain amount of money out of their paycheck into this account, and then use it for reimbursement, for out-of-pocket medical expenses, or other uses, and utilize that pre-tax.
Mr. Stith, was this done in response to the dental and optical plans?
It was.
Being illegal?
Yes.
Well, yes.
Yes.
More to the story.
Madam President, so currently, under some of the contracts that we have, there are employees who were being given a fixed amount every month of credit to a dental optical plan. This has been going on for years, and not all the employees had it, but certain union members did get it. The appointed officials also got this as a benefit. The city would keep track of all of the money that they built up over time, and employees would turn in receipts for dental expenses or optical expenses and get reimbursed for it as part of our insurance package that we were offering employees. An outside legal opinion was sought, and we were told that that was not legal. It did not meet the requirements for the IRS for running a flexible spending account or an HRA, so health-related account. So we had to eliminate that part of the benefits for those employees. We could no longer manage our own. We had to pay out the balance to the employees, any money that they had saved in those accounts, and we had to create a mechanism for creating an account that met the guidelines of the IRS. From my understanding, when this was originally developed, it was legal, but laws change. IRS guidelines change, and especially the way that reimbursement of money that is taken out for a tax has changed. So we are doing this to be compliant with IRS regulations.
It was done as part of the state auditors, as part of our financial recovery plan, looked at it, and they got the determination that our old plan was illegal. Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question through the chair to the auditor, actually two. One is, can you describe how is the usage related to cost? Is there a flat fee charged to the city, or is it based on the number of employees that opt into the plan? And then the second is, how is this being communicated to employees or appointed officials who might be eligible?
Mr. Stith.
There were a series of meetings that were held over a one-month period with all of the employees being notified of this. This is not something that is managed by my office. This is managed by an outsourced third-party administrator because of the legal requirements for that. They had multiple meetings, discussed this with employees, letters were sent to employees, forms were sent to them. This all sort of happened outside of my control or my venue. All that we are responsible for, once the employee fills out their election packet, the third-party administrator manages this, notifies my office how much is to be taken out of each paycheck. We take it out and put it into a fund, and then they send us a bill, and we send it to them. So as far as the management, there's no human resource officer in the city. There's nobody actually managing this. This is an outside company that's doing this. The fees are being paid by the employees out of this. There's a nominal fee that's associated with it.
Thank you.
That's my understanding.
Mr. Breeden.
Thank you, Madam President. Question for the auditor through the chair, please. Has the third party been selected yet?
Mr. Stith.
Yes, yes. Task is the name of the company. I can provide, for any of you that are interested, the contact name and number is down in my office. I can get it to you after the meeting, or if you email me on it, or if you email my office on it, we can get you that. These were people that were brought in by the, there were a couple of companies that spoke to the administration, and the city attorneys were involved in it, and they brought the company in to talk about the options. Once we were notified that we could no longer operate the dental optical plan that had been operated, this was the suggestion of the way to go.
Thank you, Mr. Stith. So employees can use their flexible spending accounts to pay for deductibles, for medicines, for over-the-counter medicines, anything like that that has dental bills, eyeglasses, anything that's not covered by their insurance, and it's taken out pre-tax, so it's a benefit tax-wise to the employee. Some companies offer just flexible spending. Some people I know puts money into their flexible spending accounts and have very, very high deductible health insurance policies because they don't go to the doctor very much, and so they're able to get tax benefits and have money in their flexible spending accounts if, for their high deductibles if they ever need it, so. Certainly options that have been out in the private industry for a long, long time. Is there an urgency to get this done? This has already been taken, monies are being currently taken out, Mr. Stith?
Yes, that's true. I want to be clear on this. This ordinance only establishes a fund, which is an accounting unit.
Correct.
That we are going to use for the accounting of the transfer of money. This ordinance does not require any approval for the establishment of the program. All this is, is approving that accounting unit of the fund to be able to manage it.
Correct. And it doesn't cost the city of Norwood anything?
No. This ordinance does not cost anything. This just creates a fund, an accounting unit, that we can use to track the money in our bookkeeping.
Thank you, Mr. Stith. Mr. Thompson.
I would move that we suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance creating and establishing the Norwood Agency Fund 33 Employee Flex Spending Account and declaring an emergency. Ordinance creating and establishing the Norwood Agency Fund 33 Employee Flex Spending Account and declaring an emergency. Ordinance creating and establishing the Norwood Agency Fund 33 Employee Flex Spending Account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Ms. Stevenson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a resolution declaring the necessity for and authorizing the transfer of $3 million from the sewer fund 61 to the water fund 50 of the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency. Mr. Stith, would you like to comment on this?
Yes, Madam.
We did speak about this at the last meeting, and I made them aware of the possibility that we could do this, but could you speak to it?
So as many people know, the water fund has been operating in a deficit since about the beginning of last year. It is not sustainable at the current levels of water billing that we have in the city. But on the other hand, we have our sewer fund, which has had a surplus for about the past five years. We've brought the state auditor in, outside audit team, to look at that utility aspect of the city and determine if there's a problem with the way those two funds are run. Their suggestion was one of two different things. Number one, raise water rates, which we are not suggesting. Or the other thing is to transfer money that is a surplus amount in the sewer fund to the water fund. This surplus amount can be utilized by the city because even though we are collecting money for the sewer bills, we're not charging for that service. So when our workers go out and when we're sending out mailing and all of the office time that's used for that and the computer software and everything else, the city's really not being paid for that management aspect of the sewer fund. They're being paid for all of that management out of the water fund, which is one reason why it's, smaller reason why they're part of a deficit. So we are allowed to charge those management fees. In the, when the state came in and looked at the sewer fund, they really weren't able to figure out why there was a huge amount left in there because when we get a water, when we get a sewer bill from the city of Cincinnati, it does not show a usage level on it the way the water bill does. So we get the water bill that says, you use this many units of water, this much per unit, here's your total. When we get the sewer bill, it says, here's how much you owe. And for some reason, the amount that we owe has been dropping or a little bit lower than what we had for the water bill. So this was the answer we really wanted the state to figure out why this was happening, and they couldn't come up with a clear answer, but their suggestion was to take the amount of surplus, or a significant portion of it, that is not being utilized to pay the sewer bill, and move it to the water fund. Because this is the citizens' money. This is the people who live here, their money that they paid for their water bill. A portion of it paid their sewer bill. Now we've got extra money in the sewer fund, we can apply it to the expenses related to the water fund, correcting that deficit and not having to raise water rates for a few years, which I think is a good thing. Now, on the other hand, people may look at this and go, wow, there's all this extra money, let's use it for other things. Can we fix a street? Can we fix something in City Hall? Or buy new computers? Or do anything else? Well, as I said, this is money people paid for their water bill. It was the sewer portion of their water bill. I can make the argument to the state tax office, who has the authority to say that we can or can't do this, I can make the argument that this money goes to the water fund, to help pay the water bill. It'd be very difficult to make that argument for any other reason. So the process is that city council passes a resolution saying, hey, we got this surplus, we want to move it to the water fund. The next step in the process is me writing an application for this to the state office of taxation, who then reviews the financials related to this, and hopefully gives us authorization to do this. Part of that authorization will be them having discussion with the state auditors and the fiscal emergency commission representatives as to whether they believe this is a good idea and they do support this idea.
Thank you, Mr. Stith. Mrs. Hanahan.
I'm sorry. Have the residents been overcharged for the sewer? Is that the reason there's an excess amount in there? Have we been charging our residents more for the sewers? Sewer rate? I'm sorry.
Mr. Stith.
Yes, Madam President. That was the question that we posed to the state. Because the question is, why is this surplus? Are people being charged too much? Is there a difficulty or a problem with our calculations? And they could not answer that based on the billing that we get from the states. So we really wanted to get a clearer answer, but given the fact that we have a surplus on one side and a deficit on the other, it's a good opportunity to move that money over and use it for the water bill. Now, how exactly the billing is done, how exactly it is calculated, that is a discussion for the water department and the administrators of that department.
And I would add that at the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission meeting that was posed to the financial advisors, and they, their initial audit of the water department was simply looking at when the money came in for billing, was money appropriately broken down into the water fund and sewer fund? And that was done, there was not a problem on that. And what they are now looking at is to make sure that the sewage is being billed on a correct basis. And as Mr. Stith said, the administrative fees, we do get some administrative fees for administering that account, but we don't charge anything to the sewer fund. Is that correct?
No.
We charge everything to the water fund. So all of the hours, the people who work on the water lines, or any of the capital improvements or whatever are charged to the water part of it and not to the sewer fund. So that may account for some of it, but they are going to be looking into that in the future. Follow-up? Yes, ma'am.
If you're not getting a detailed bill for the sewage, can't you ask for a more detailed bill?
And I'm certain that's probably, that's probably in the discussion part of what the state auditors are doing at the current time with the water department. I'm assuming that they're going to be looking at MSD and ask for a more detailed billing. Thank you. There's some discussion around, I mean, I just had a conversation with a resident about sewage and how it was charged, and it appeared to be that she was, during summer months, charged a little more, more than she should have been. But that's, again, that's just something I'm going to bring up to the state auditors as something that I've seen that might prove to be helpful in the future. I don't know. Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, I understand the desire to do this. I'm hesitant to get behind it, though, without knowing why there is the surplus, and also knowing at the same time that there is still an investigation going into determining why there is a surplus. It doesn't, I, it doesn't feel right that we could potentially be overcharging on one aspect of a water bill and then using that money to make up what could have been an undercharging, or is just a mistake, or whether it's not charging maintenance fees or whatever for the other. I know from a resident's standpoint, they see one number, and they pay one number, and that's really all that matters. But the fact of the matter is, is there's two numbers hidden in there, and one of them is out of whack. And I'm not particularly comfortable with giving an okay to take money that is potentially, I don't want to say ill-gotten, but we don't know why it's higher. And until I know why it's higher, I don't think I'm comfortable moving this money.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. We may never know, quite honestly. Mr. Breeden.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Madam President. I think, I think it may, and I understand, I understand that. I think it makes sense, though, that all the capital improvements and all the, like when someone digs up the water lines, gets up the sewers, and then has to do repairs, that's all coming out of the water flow. So it kind of makes sense to me why this would be depleted and this would not be so. I understand that the improvements are coming out one foot and not the other, so it kind of makes sense to me, so I just, I won't throw that in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Any other discussion? We have no motions, so. Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President. A question through the chair to the auditor. Part of the reason for the, yes, part of the rationale around the emergency says to fulfill the current contractual obligations. Are we able to pay current billing with what's in the balance right now if this is not moved today?
In the water fund, you're asking?
Correct.
Mr. Stith.
No, actually, the water fund right now is $545,000 negative, which you can see on the financial reports that were sent out to everybody a couple of days ago. It's been running at a negative. It ended last year with a negative balance of $147,000. So it continues to run negative.
And that's despite increases this year?
Despite an increase. We increased last year also, and continue to watch this go down because the expenses related to the water fund continue to rot, and we really have no control over that. Understand, a lot of times when I'm saying "we," this is not, my department does not manage the water fund, or manage the billing, or manage any of that. We do, do the accounting from the revenue and expenditure side. We wanted an outside source to look at the problems that were, we perceived to be within that department from just a bottom-line standpoint financially as to how they're billing and everything works, and that's why the state came in and looked at that. As Mrs. Lake said, there was some concern initially about the routing of the money into the funds. If one is, if a bill comes in and we're told this much goes into sewer fund and this much goes into water fund, were those, was that money being appropriately placed in each fund? And that is done correctly according to the state. From the expenditure side of it, though, you know, there's an issue where the operating expenses for both funds are essentially paid out of one of them. And the way the sewer fund is set up, I don't think we can bill directly for those services. And the way the sewer fund is set up, I don't think we can bill directly for those services to that fund because it's the way it's managed. I'd have to check where it's ranked under the certification. Because there's certain funds that are only used for passive accounts. And then there's other funds that we can use where we can charge services to, contractual materials and supplies, or even personnel services to. You can't do that to every type or classification. So moving the money from one fund to another, the one that would not allow for those types of expenditures into the one that would allow for those types of expenditures, seems like the best course of action as opposed to raising rates or additional fees to the one which has a deficit in it. But we're going to have to do one or the other. The Fiscal Emergency Commission has said that, the state auditors have said that, the water fund has a deficit. We either transfer money or we raise rates. Neither one of those is my decision. But, you know, and I think that if, honestly, if you guys want to have a first reading and come back and revisit that, this, this is a very, that's a very reasonable thing to do. But the clock does start ticking as we get down closer to the end of the year because just passing this resolution does not allow the transfer of the money. We have to apply to the state taxation office for approval for this, and the timing on that I imagine would be, you know, a significant amount of time for that turnaround, but I'm not saying it has to be done tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Stith. Mr. Thompson?
Thanks, Mr. Stith. Personally, I would feel more comfortable, I'm fine with having one reading on this. I don't, I will vote against any more than one reading on this tonight. But if, for instance, we're saying that we want to pull this money out of the sewer fund because we can't actually bill directly to the sewer fund for the maintenance that we do, in the future, one, I would like us to figure out a better fix for that because it's clearly not working. And two, I would feel more comfortable if, let's say, I think you said that the sewer fund has started building the surplus over the last five years. So if we could look at the city's expenses on maintaining sewer lines and sewer facilities over the last five years and say, okay, well, the city has spent or drawn out the water fund X number of dollars to work on actual sewer-related things, then I would feel much more comfortable about this, even if it didn't equal up to that $3 million. But if we could say, because if you did an audit of that and came back and said, well, the city has spent $150,000 over the last five years to maintain sewers, I will have a really big problem maintaining that. I'm just throwing out a number.
Right.
For graphic purposes, I have no idea what the actual number is. But if there's a huge discrepancy between what we spent to maintain sewers and this number, I find our reasoning lacking. I think we have to have a really good reason to take $3 million that we have collected from residents for one purpose and apply it to another purpose without having a much better understanding of why we have that money.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Bottsall?
Thank you, Madam President. So, I mean, I'm going to vote for the first reading tonight, and I understand the concerns that many of my colleagues have raised. I mean, the funds, whether we move the funds or not, I mean, the water fund still, we've got to address it, and it really, you know, not raising rates for a couple of years because we have it in there is not a good option because then when we do have to raise rates, it's going to be like 20% raise in the water rate or something large because then we'll have to actually stay on par with where we, with the expenses that we'll have plus catch up on the raises that we didn't make. So I'd at least like to make sure that we look into that because I did look at the numbers for the past three and a half years for the water fund. So on January 1st, 2017, there was $296,000 in the fund. January 1st, 2018, there was $109,000. January 1st, 2019, we were negative $147,000. And then now, just six months later, on July 1st, 2019, we're negative $545,000. And so, you know, I think this really kind of warrants, and I've, we've asked the city administration to look into this, and maybe they looked into it, maybe they didn't, but we still don't have any results on it since it is their department. But I do think this warrants us recommending to them, or at least somebody potentially hiring a consultant that could come in, a professional, not just a state auditor maybe looking at a book, but somebody to actually look at our water system and see if it's operating efficiently. Because to me, I would be concerned about, especially this year, when we have, you know, that $300,000 increase in the deficit in just six months, you know, is there things that are going on in the water system where we're losing water or what have you that, you know, we're not, where we're losing money? So in the city of Cincinnati or wherever else, if you operate your own water system, you essentially, if there's a water main break, it doesn't really matter because you're only, it costs so little to put any extra water in there. But when the city of Norwood has a water main break or any other kind of leakages, we're paying for that because about 70% of your water portion of your bill goes back to pay the city of Cincinnati for, or Greater Cincinnati Water Works for the water. So if there's a water main break, it's already passed the meters where we're getting billed at, but yet it didn't get to the resident's home, and so we never actually got to bill for that. So anyways, whether it's leakages, whatever it is, I think that it warrants us, or warrants the city potentially looking into that, see if we can save money. I don't have a concern moving the money because frankly, I, everything that we've asked about, there's really nothing else that we can do with it except move it. I guess we could leave it in the sewage account, but we do need to figure out why it's increasing, although it's not increasing by as much as it was. It was about $300,000 a year until a couple of years ago, and I think now it's very negligible, the annual increase. But, I mean, it would be good to know why, but we've asked questions why, even before, you know, my first term on council, we asked questions why, and we never really got a good answer. I did hear, though, that Joe, the Safety Service Director, did bring in MSD a couple of years ago, and they looked at the billing and to figure out why it happened. And they said that the city of Norwood was billing exactly like how the Hamilton County commissioners have authorized them the bill, since they're the ones that set the rates, we don't set sewer rates. So again, not sure why this is happening, but, and I don't really have that big of an issue moving the funds around, but whether we move them or not, I mean, Mr. Thompson is correct in that both of them, we need to figure out what the heck's going on. And so I'd be interested to hear any other ideas for how we can kind of do that because the ideas of asking the city administration to look into it, that hasn't really panned out.
Thank you, Mr. Bottsall. So we still have the resolution. It is your pleasure. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I knew that we have the first reading of the resolution.
Seconded by Mr. Bottsall. Is there any additional discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bottsall?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sanger?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye the motion carries, please have the first reading.
Resolution declaring the necessity for and authorizing the transfer of $3 million from the Sewage Fund 61 to the Water Fund 50 of the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency.
We have no administration reports nor other requests to address council. We move on to unfinished business. I just want to let you know that as part of the Safe Routes to School grant that the city of Norwood received several years ago, a lot of the work was done around the schools as you have seen it. The folks from up around Norwood View Elementary weren't real happy because we ran out of money before we could get the flashing 20 mile an hour school zone signs up around that school. The work that was done actually came in underestimate, and so there were funds left over. We petitioned Tom Arnold, who is All Things State Routes to School in Ohio, and asked if we could use the surplus funds to put those flashing lights in front of View. And I'm happy to report that that was just recently approved. And so the regular signs will be coming down and the flashing yellow signs will be going up around Norwood View Elementary. They'll be ready for when the children go back to school in the fall. And again, that's all through Safe Routes to School, so. Mr. Thompson, you may get, you may have been getting calls about that, but it's all going to be resolved now, so I just wanted to pass along that good news. Or Mr. Sanger or Mr. Braden, I don't know if you all are getting calls, but you can let folks know that that is going to be done. That's my unfinished business. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Madam President. In our last council meeting during much discussion, I offered the parties who were negotiating contracts, the opportunity to let me know if they had reached out to one another, whether they were successful in reaching out to one another, in order to schedule meetings to begin negotiations. I had one party reach out to me that had examples from prior to when I made the offer, but I stated that I would much prefer that it was from the point of the offer forward. As of yet, nobody has reached out to me to tell me that they are attempting to negotiate contracts. I feel that's important for the people of the city to know because it's an important issue. I think that means one of a few things, either nobody's tried, nobody's contacted me about trying, or that they have actually tried and been successful. I don't know either, either of those three answers. But it did make me think it's entirely possible that all the groups involved don't want to negotiate at this point. We've got five years left in this administration, and it's possible that they would like to punt the ball to the next administration. I would also be happy to make that announcement. If anybody would like to let me know if the administration says, hey, we don't want to deal with this, let me know, I'll come on council floor and let everybody in the city know. If any of the other bargaining units would like to tell me that, I would be happy to do that as well. Mostly, I just want to keep the people informed about what I'm sure is a good-hearted effort to negotiate new union contracts. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there any other unfinished business? Mr. Sanger?
Madam President, yes, would like to commend the Norwood Fireworks Committee for the job well done on the Fourth of July fireworks down at Shea Stadium, Waterworks Park. Festivities during the day and also the fireworks display was compared to anybody else's, it was, we've seen, it was well done. So I'd like to commend them for the work they do. It takes them, I mean, they're already starting now for next year, so I just would like to recognize them for the job well done.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Sanger. Any other unfinished business? Mr. Bottsall?
Thank you, Madam President. So at the last council meeting, I made a motion and we unanimously approved a request a letter be sent to the city administration regarding the financial recovery plan. As many of you all remember, at that meeting, we were kind of shocked to hear that the mayor had expressed his intentions to hire many more police and firefighters beyond what he had proposed to us and what we had approved as our budget for the year and ongoing. So at that meeting, we approved a letter be sent requesting that he get a draft of a new financial recovery plan to us by this meeting, as the Financial Recovery Commission gave us 45 days from about two weeks ago in order to get this done before we start seeing significant impacts on the operations of the city. And so I guess my question is, I don't know if it's to you, Madam President, or to the clerk, but have, do we have any responses from the city administration, and have they, have they provided us anything from that?
No, the letter was sent.
I don't know, I did not receive a response.
I did not receive a response.
Okay.
But I can verify that the, we got a copy of the letter that was sent to both the administration and to, it's supposed to be sent to the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission members as well. I have not received a response.
Yep.
Mr. Bottsall?
Yeah, so, okay, that's helpful to know. We did today receive, and all of council did receive this, a discussion draft, I guess you would call it, of a, what the financial recovery plan could potentially look like from the auditor, and I was hoping that maybe we could hear from the auditor about, more about that document that was sent out.
Mr. Stith?
Yes, Madam President. The Honorable State Anna Mary Thompson is coming down to, or Thomas is coming to the city on Monday, the 15th, to work with me in my office on some draft plans. As part of that process, I have started to put together some spreadsheets that look at what we would be looking at by increasing the staffing in police and fire, how that affects the bottom line of the plan, and also making changes, pulling out a lot of the things that were in the, basically, capital improvement plan, purchases for the city, things like that. I've sent an email through the clerk of council and to the head of the finance committee out, and you should all have gotten today, so it wasn't, it was this afternoon, because that's the point that I am on the spreadsheets. This is involved to keep you in the loop and to see, see the things that we are looking at. It is not a commitment in any way to any changes in the plan, it just shows what types of changes that can be made and how those changes affect the bottom line. As a council person, you can click on the tab that's called assumptions, and you can change anything on a given line. You can add and subtract things, and it'll run the calculations at the bottom of the page and show you what is the fund balance or deficit at the end of each year. So if you want to plug something back in that's suggested being taken out, make that change, see how it affects it. If there's other changes that come to mind that you think, go ahead and play with it and put those numbers in and see how it affects the bottom line. That's what this tool is used for. I operated on the initial assumptions in discussions with the mayor, the idea of pulling out everything from the fiscal emergency plan except for the things that we've already committed to this year. So when we're talking about doing something three years from now, if we can't balance the budget this year, having discussions of planning what we're going to do three years from now isn't really beneficial to us. So we're pulling those things out because this is going to change next year anyway, under a new council, under a new mayor, there's going to be a new plan. So pulling these things out and looking at how they affect the bottom line is the beginnings of what we're working on now. When we look at that fiscal emergency plan and we look at the things only affecting the general fund, so not the street fund and capital expenditures planned there, but only the general fund, if we start pulling out all these other things, then it does affect our bottom line, but we're still left with a negative unencumbered balance at the end of 2023 of $2,293,000, negative. We are positive at the end of 2019 by $346,000 of unencumbered money, positive $207,000 at the end of 2020, and then it starts to do a nosedive. And one of the big reasons there is health insurance. The old fiscal emergency plan, because I've heard this suggested, why don't we go back to the old plan? The old plan was closer to balancing. Well, the old plan did not include projected increases for health insurance costs. Now, we have a health insurance plan for the city right now that is locked in for 2019 and 2020. After that point, we have to start calculating in how much it's going to cost this city, which pays 100% of healthcare for its employees, when it goes up 15% in 2021, and another 15% in 2022, and another 15% in 2023. And when you're talking about health plans for a family that costs $22,000 a year per employee, it's pretty significant. The average spend is $18,000 per employee. So when that number starts going up, multiplied by our just shy of 200 employees, it starts to jump pretty drastically. This, these numbers for projections for police and fire, the police, we do have a cost of living adjustment that's built in every year. The police also show under their current contract, while their staffing would be at 50 this year, it does go to 52 in 2020. So we show that increase, we show the step increases in the police and fire where as people get here longer, they get step increases for going up. We tried to roll in some projections for promotions, put in the cost of living adjustment, but we did, and the increases for health insurance, but we did not put in any raises because we're broke. With this plan, with these contracts, the way it is, we can't afford it. So the Fiscal Emergency Commission has said we have 45 days to make this balance. I'm happy to sit here and run numbers for people. You know, that's what we do. But what I'm telling you, that under the current contracts, here's our bottom line, and we're negative at the end of this fiscal emergency plan, in the whole, almost $2.3 million, that's what the numbers are.
And that is all of the capital outlays at zero?
There are things this year that have already been- There are things this year that have already been-
Correct.
Right, that are already committed to.
But other than that, it's all zero?
Right. So when you're looking at the pieces, the file that I sent you, the assumptions page is just kind of that overview, right? It shows the increase for police and fire, and then it shows all the numbers I pulled out. When you look at the tab that says Updated Plan, every key that's been changed is highlighted in red if it went negative and yellow if it went up. Then it has a copy of the current plan there also on another tab that you can click on and look to compare if you wanted to see how this changes between our current rough draft and what the plan is legally right now. Then there's some other keys that show projections for police and fire changing based on their contract. So it's a fun spreadsheet. Get in there and play with it, try to break it. If you come up with any great ideas, I'm happy to plug them in. Now, this is not, as I said, what you asked for. This is not the administration giving you something. This is me in my office trying to keep you guys in the loop a little bit more and to maybe get some input.
Thank you, Mr. Siff. Mr. Thompson?
First, Mr. Siff, I just want to say thank you. It's a lot of work to do. Let me see, so a quick question that is slightly related to this. The financial recovery plan, it started out as a five-year plan, correct? And we are two and a half years into it. So technically, the plan that they want us to have, I mean, we're projecting out five years, and that's good, but, but we are, technically, the financial recovery plan should finish up in 2021? 2020? Or it's a continual addition?
We're supposed to project out five years each year. It's a rolling-
So how do we know when we're done with the financial recovery plan?
Please?
How do we know when we're done with the financial recovery plan?
When we are in the black, when we have a plan for staying in the black, and when we have our capital improvement projects planned in place.
Perfect, so-
And policy and procedures updated.
Exactly. So what we had been, and I say we-
Five years, easily.
Right, and I say what we have been, but I say we, it's not really, I'm not all that involved with it, but in putting together our, our financial recovery plan, up until this point, we had, at the end of five years, we were in the black. And we had a workable capital improvements plan that we just started this year. We just finally got enough wind under our wings to put together a capital improvements plan. It's by no means a great capital improvements plan, mind you, but it covered off on some things. What we have here, and I'm just saying this, I know we all understand this, but there are people at home that are watching and the people in the audience, we've completely killed the capital improvements plan. And, and we're still at the end of five years, $2.2 million in the hole. So what that means is, is the two big qualifiers for being successful with your financial recovery plan at this moment are dead in the water. We do not have a viable capital improvements plan, and we are not in the black at the end of five years.
That's correct.
So, now, I remember, I have specifically asked this, and we had all echoed it, we wanted to actually know what was going to be cut in order to make these numbers work. We had asked the administration that, we'd sent a letter. I personally think that just cutting the capital improvements plan that we just put together, while it's important to do, as Mr. Siff said, if we don't balance it this year, we don't have the money to pay for this, this, none of this actually exists. None of it's been paid for or anything. So I'm really interested, and now that we've realized that if we completely cut the capital improvements plan, what other city services does the administration propose that we cut to make up the $2.2 million over five years?
And, you know, it's just, and it's not even reasonable to have that at zero. Cars are going to break down.
Of course, no, I'm not, it needs-
Fire, yeah, fire trucks need to be replaced, paramedic units need to be replaced.
$2.2 million over five years, parks budget around $200,000 a year, you completely stop taking care of our parks and our recreation department and our pool, no pool for the kids, no parks, no, no nothing, and you wouldn't even make a half of what we need just to get even. So I'm, I'm just trying to make this real for people who are listening, and the real situation that we were in. And I know everybody's frustrated because up until three months ago, two months ago, we were doing pretty good. And now we're in a situation where the future isn't looking too bright. I'm disappointed that we don't have what we asked for at our last council meeting. I think two weeks was plenty time. Not your fault, Mr. Siff, especially knowing that this has been on the mind of certain individuals, at least for the last couple of months. I don't think that our request was unreasonable. Mr. Siff just said we had 45 days. We in fact do not. That was 45 days, two weeks ago. We're down to 30, 31 days to come up with a viable plan, or for us to approve a viable plan. And right now, this is not even close. So I don't know if we need to send another letter. It's probably not worth it. Doesn't appear that it's been very paid attention to, to begin with. But folks, that's what, that's what we're dealing with here. That's $2.2 million over five years, no capital improvements. I just, wait, before, I know I'm talking a lot, but this is important. I just want to read a few things that were on our capital improvements plan. New police vehicles were on our capital improvements plan, both squad cars and CIS vehicles. New HVAC system for the police department, police computers, a new fire truck and a new ladder truck, a new ambulance, replaced windows in City Hall, AC all over the place, street sweeper, upgraded traffic and pedestrian signals. These are the kinds of things that cities should just be able to do. We had to cap, we had to plan ahead for upgraded traffic signals in a city of 20,000 people in 2019. Garage utility truck, lawnmower equipment, playground equipment, these are, these are the things that start touching in my heart. Lights at Waterworks baseball fields, stairs at Millcrest, Victory Park, Fenwick Park, roofs, restrooms at Burrwood, basketball goals. We've been working on it for a year. We're really close. Basketball goals are gone. Matching funds for grants, gone. That's free money. So I couldn't care less about pool chairs. People can bring their own chairs. But that being said, there, there is a whole lot that goes into running a city, and a lot that I think people take for granted. And I'm, I'm happy I was able to spell this out. I'm thankful that Jim Siff put this together, so we were able to spell that out. And I'm sure the rest of council shares in my frustration, and I hope the city shares in my frustration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Sankar?
Everything you said makes sense. You have, we're going to have to cut that or eliminate that stuff. But you ask, you know, how do you explain why you're at that point to people? Mr. Siff gave you a sheet right here. At the first two lines, explains everything. Just hand that to them. And then he also mentioned healthcare costs. Just explain that to them. Your answer is right there. I mean, it's in black and white. We have contracts that we're obligated to abide by, which we haven't been. And we tried to get an answer from the state, which takes precedent. If we don't abide by the contracts, are we liable? If we abide by our plan and the state fiscal mercy, which one takes precedent? At this point, we don't have an answer. We don't have an answer. We had to abide by the contract. And if we do abide by the contract, as they are right now, those first two lines on that page, one of two that Mr. Siff gave you, just hand that to people, and it'll explain where all this other stuff went to. I mean, it's, it's, it's right there. I mean, it's not like anything unusual. That's the reason for the change. Now, if we get an answer that we don't have to abide by the contract, that we can, our plan, the fiscal emergency plan, takes precedent over contracts, we go back, right back to where we were, and all this stuff be jumping right back in there, you know? But until somebody gives us, you know, which state statute takes precedent, does the fiscal emergency take stat, precedent over the contracts or vice versa? And that's, that's the tough nut, and that's why we're, pardon expression, kind of screwed right now. So, but that's, that's where it is. Until we get some resolution to that, we either have to abide by the contract or abide by the fiscal plan, and either way, we're going to be in violation of one or the other. So I guess it's pick your poison, you know?
If, if I may, if I may respond, I mean, if we abide by the contracts, we, we won't have the money to take care of the city.
You're exactly right.
So, I mean, and I understand it's the reality of what we're looking at, and I know, I know very well what you're saying. It's spelled out right there for us. The whole point of the fiscal emergency plan was to plan for what the city could actually do and, and maintain a certain level of services. I want the best funded safety services departments that this city can afford. And right now, our contracts call for safety services that this city can't afford. So that being said, that's why we did what we did. And I say we, but there's, there's a whole lot of we in the we. We did what we did, and, and the financial recovery plan was to show the state, show the auditors, show our constituents, that we, as a body and as a government, understood what it was going to take to set this city on the right path. So that, that doesn't fix our problem, but that, that to me is the difference between financial recovery plan or contracts. It's, in the end, it's not my decision who hires who. That's a, that's the city administration decision, and if they hire, then we will, I guess, start cutting services, and that, that won't be very fun.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Sankar?
Yes, I mean, you're somewhat correct. However, if, if we abide by the fiscal plan, these are the numbers we abide by. If we abide and don't honor the contract and abide by our current fiscal plan, then we're in violation of the contract. And at what, what point, if we're in violation, at what point do we get to when somebody will finally tell you, you have to abide by the contract, you have to abide by the fiscal plan? And that's between the rock and the hot, hard spot. You know, if, if we, the plan was based on a contract or personnel numbers that were not in the contract, with the hope that, hey, eventually, we can get to that point. We're not there. So when are we going, when, when will we have an answer on contracts? You know, when we, will we be told, yep, you got to abide by them? And what takes precedent? That's the tough nut, you know? Does the one statute take precedent over the other? And that's where, that's why we're kind of-
I mean, I'm not a lawyer. We've got one here. But it's even not a lawyer's decision. This honestly is a state Supreme Court issue. I don't know how it gets there, but it's, it's a decision that a court has to make because nobody at state level is willing to make that determination of what is, what is that? And, and I know that we realize that. I'm saying this because people at home might not realize that the situation where you've got two conflicting state laws. One of them dictating our financial security for the near future. If we don't stick with it, we, what, we lose. We drop down to 85% of what we were the year before-
Correct.
-if we fail. Nobody gets paid then. And another, with, with fair bargaining contracts with union, that you have to stick with. I, it's, I don't, I, I'm not really making a point. I'm just clarifying that, that it's, it really is a decision for courts to make. It's not, it's not a, you can ask 10 lawyers, and I have a feeling you'll get 10 different or relatively different answers on what you should be doing. But that being said, this still isn't what we asked for two weeks ago, and I would very much like to have what we asked for two weeks ago.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't even know who this question would be for, maybe you. With the decision from the Fiscal Recovery Commission, is the mayor actually required to present a new plan to us in the 45 days?
Well, it is the mayor's plan that council can change or approve or disapprove or whatever. Ultimately, council has to pass the plan before it can get to the commission. So technically, it is the mayor's plan that he's supposed to present to council.
So follow up to that, if he does not present one, and we pass one that we've developed ourselves based on all of that information, does that have to be approved by him?
We, we approve the financial recovery plan by ordinance.
Gotcha, okay, thanks.
And that question was asked, that question was asked at the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission. Can council just pass their own? And so somebody suggested, well, since council wants to pass it, then really, it's council's plan. And then I'm like, no, we pass that by ordinance, and the mayor can either sign the ordinance or veto the ordinance or not do anything. So ultimately, it's working together, council, you know, hopefully, a plan is presented that council can approve and signed off on by the mayor.
That answers that. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Mr. Vonsal?
Thank you, Madam President. So I just want to respond to a couple of things that a few of my colleagues have said, and then I also want to add a few things. So, I mean, it was explained that, you know, we can just show the piece of paper to people, just show them the paper, and we justify why we're in the situation that we're in. But I really don't find that answer acceptable at all because I'm not going to just sit here and let the city continue to deteriorate without taking action. And I felt like that we have taken action the last couple of years, and it's put us in a much better place. We had money to get things done, like fix the roof at City Hall. We had money to fix the back of council chambers, which we had it blocked off with caution tape because somebody could have fallen through it. There was money to get some police crews this year. There was money last year to get an ambulance. And we're going to have no more of that money if we move forward with a plan that looks like this. You know, it was said that it's in the contract. Well, this staffing levels have been in the contract since the early 1980s or late 1970s, somewhere around there. And there have been many attempts to try to get this stuff out of the contracts, and the chances of it happening is, is very, it's very slim. And so while we're in financial emergency, the mayor has always been on board with us, staffing at a level that we can afford, so that we can catch up on some of the stuff that we need to catch up on. And so far, it's been working because we've been able to catch up on that. So, you know, we had a plan three months ago that the mayor presented to council, and council approved, and that had the staffing that the mayor wanted because it's in the plan. And all of a sudden, now, without any communication to us, I don't think we, council has received a letter, I don't think we've had the mayor come and speak to us about why he's making the staffing changes. I, I don't think we've heard at all, and I think that's, the amount of disrespect in ignoring us and just dumping the problem on us- ignoring us and just dumping the problem on us and doing nothing, I mean, I think, I think it's just astounding. It's not surprising at this point, but it's astounding. And so, I just think that should be noted. So...
Be careful.
I was gonna say, so lastly, then, when we look at the plan that we're going to do, I, you know, I would be very, very hesitant, I wouldn't change it at all, but I'd be very hesitant that we project out full staffing for the police and fire for 2020 to 2023 because the problem with that is, and what happened on the first year, is that literally the, the unions came into the negotiating table and said, look, council's already approved the full staffing for the next five years. Like, I don't, why does the administration even come into the table? Why are they even, why are they wanting to change it? And so if we approve, and this is why I voted against the original financial recovery plan in 20, whatever it was, 2017, but if we approve this and we put this full staffing in there, it is going to completely cut the city off at the knees when it comes to future negotiations. And so, you know, whatever we do for this year, if we have to change it, I still do not want to change it. I very much, though, would vote against any changes for 2020 to 2023 that increase, that puts the amount at the full contractual level. And it can be said, and I'm sure it's going to be, that, oh, you have to do this for the purposes of, you know, what the law says, what have you. Well, we just had a financial recovery plan that was passed, and the Fiscal Recovery Commission passed that didn't have the full staffing in there for 2020 to 2023. So if it worked then, then I think it should work now. So I just want to make that very clear, that, you know, I'd be very opposed to change, to adopting a plan that looks like this, that would have full staffing for those future years, because I think that we need to have room for the city to negotiate. And then if we have to change it, let's just say a contract comes and we have to change it later, that's why we changed the financial recovery plan. But we shouldn't assume that it's going to be the full complement those years or we're going to hurt ourselves there.
And to be clear, the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission did ask about the numbers, and were those the intentions of negotiating contracts to those numbers? And that was council's intention, and that was related to them, that that was, those numbers were in the plan because that was council's goal to the administration for reaching those numbers through negotiations. So, it was questioned. I just, I don't want you to think that the commission rubber stamped that there were, there were questions asked of that, so...
Yeah, I was...
Yes?
Yeah, I think it's good that you made that clear. Yeah, I was definitely at that meeting, so I remember hearing those questions. But, I mean, the end goal, the, the end result's the same, is that for 2020 through 2023 right now, we don't have full staffing. So this plan is going to add, for 2020, it's going to add $788,000 to the police department staffing, $768,000 for the fire department staffing, just in 2020 alone. That's over $1.5 million. And then it goes up every year just because costs go up. So, you know, I, I think it'd just be a very dangerous thing to do is to, to add all this stuff in here because, again, we don't know if those costs are actually going to be that those years. The contract expired at the end of last year, but it's because of these evergreen clauses, it's been kind of ongoing at this point. But the mayor said, what I've heard on the, from the Recovery Commission meeting, the mayor said that this is going to help us in negotiations. Well, let's see if it does, but, you know, I don't want to give anybody any, you know, feel to hurt the city even more whenever, if we were to approve it and make it look like that we are endorsing a full staffing for those later years.
And these are just your, Mr. Stitt, do you want to speak to that? These are your projections on if we are the full complement?
That's correct, and I did ask the people, Davis, who is the fiscal emergency supervisor, if we can cut the level of staffing in future years' projections. And what she said is, if you have a contract now and you're hiring these people to full complement, you gotta show full complement every year. And so that's the way we wrote it. Now, if we want to try to do something and go, well, we're going to be full complement this year, and then next year, we're going to drop, well, either people retiring or you fire them, I'm not sure which or how that works. But without a firm commitment from the city that this is going to be, or this is the staffing level they will accept, changing those numbers is not, is not reasonable and probably will not be approved by the Fiscal Emergency Commission just to decrease staffing without some other type of authority behind that.
Thank you, Mr. Stitt. Mr. Vonsal.
Thank you, Madam President. So I just find some of these answers like shocking right now because we just did this. Like, we, we approved a fiscal recovery plan for 2019 that had 49 firefighters, and then it had 45 for 2020 because of retirements. We, we just, we just had a different number, and it was just approved. So if we're not able to do that again, then whatever plan the mayor wants to present to us, I'll probably just be voting against it because it's, we, we just did it. So it seems like the rules are always changing, and that's a little frustrating to me. And I don't quite know if the answers that we're receiving right now are answers truly based on the law or truly based on that, or they're just answers so that people can wipe away the problems and not have additional issues that come up. And I'm not talking about anybody in this room, I'm just talking about the answers that the auditor is getting from people at the state. So, again, we, we just did this. We just had a plan that has 49 this year and 45 in, in future years, anticipating that we want to see the contracts change. So I, I just don't understand why we can't do that again or do something similar, so, yeah. Go back.
Thank you, Mr. Vonsal. This is Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question on what's going to happen. I don't expect, I'm going to be surprised if we get a budget from the mayor. And I want to check on the date that it's due. We're due, and when our next council meeting is, because we're off away on our next council meeting, what happens if we don't get this till the day before? We all go no, or we get it at the meeting, if we even get it? So we get penalized, I think we lose some federal funding. Then what happens if that would occur? What would be the next step that the, the state would take?
So, we, the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission gave us 45 days to come up with a plan, to pass a plan, to present to them. If we miss that deadline, the mayor said, he asked point blank, so are you gonna, are you gonna be the ones, are you, are you gonna tell me that you're going to sit here and vote to cut us to go back to the 85% nuclear option? And the lady from the auditor's, or the treasures officer, I'm sorry, Office of Management and Budget, OMB, said, the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission doesn't have to vote on that. It's an automatic, it's an automatic thing that happens in the law. So we would not get state or federal funds like the permissive tax fund that we got from the state of Ohio, like the increase in the gasoline tax. We wouldn't get that money. That would stop, the state would hold that. And then we, they would look at what our expenditures were for the next month, so it's due in August. So they would look at what our expenditures were in September of 2018, and we would be limited to spending 85% of what we spent in September of 2018, in September of 2019. The commission meets on August the 20th.
Okay, when, when is the, the 45 days up, and what date is our next meeting?
Well, we typically are off on the 23rd. That would be our next meeting because that's the night of the parade. So our, I mean, we could, in theory, there's five Tuesdays, so we could, in theory, meet the 30th, there is a fifth Tuesday. Our next regularly scheduled meeting then would be August the 13th.
And what date is this due?
And I think it was due, I have a star, by August the 9th.
So we don't even have another council meeting scheduled by the time this whole thing's supposed to be done, and we don't have a budget. This is not a good way to run the city.
Forty-five days, it's August the 9th, I just double-checked.
This is not a good way to run the city.
Thank you, Madam President. I also think we just wanted to make it noted, and I've, and I've heard no answers on this whatsoever, and it's been pretty frustrating, actually, like how little help I'm kind of able to get on this topic. But even if we had no financial recovery plan, even if we just had, you know, appropriations, we still have only passed appropriations to a level that funds the police and fire departments at the 45 and 49.
Correct.
For this year. And so, you know, if the mayor goes against that, then what's the point, I guess, of having appropriations if essentially you can just do whatever you want? Because, I don't know if I said this at the last meeting, but I mean, I'm thinking that maybe the auditor should just hire a human resources director, because we do need one of those, so just go ahead and hire one of those because it doesn't matter, we don't need to approve it, because this is kind of showing a precedence. I think we definitely need another lawyer in the law department, so I think we should go ahead and, no offense, Mr. Gary, but he works probably 50 to 60 hours a week. I think he could use some help. The treasures office, maybe they need some help because we're not getting any checks cashed right now, so apparently it takes three months for that, so they could probably use some help there, too. So I guess where does it stop? Like, so if, and that's, that's the question, we've only approved appropriations so much, so where does it stop? And I just really think it needs to continue to be noted that the mayor created this problem because he brought us the plan originally that had the numbers that were in there. And all of a sudden, he's going against the plan that he, he brought forward, and we haven't heard from him, we haven't heard from the labor attorneys about how this even benefits anybody, about how this could benefit us, because he apparently believes it does. So it just needs to continue to be stressed that this, I, I still don't know what we do with the fact that we're violating appropriations. Can we sue the mayor? Is that what we're supposed to do, like if we're in that point? Maybe that is what we're supposed to do, I don't know. But, you know, it, it seems like there's no other enforcement, that these kind of things can just happen, and we just have to pay the paycheck. So that's the answer I've been getting, so, yeah, it's just frustrating.
Thank you, Mr. Vonsal. Is there any other unfinished business? Is there any other new biz, any new business? Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. I gave you a letter and asked, because my voice is kind of going in and out here, and ask if you agreed it for me. It was from a resident, thank you.
So Mrs. Hanahan is having trouble with her voice, and I don't have any trouble with mine today, so... This is from Dana Bold. Dear City Council, save the date, August the 17th. Wassenway 45212, citizens design impact charrette facilitated by DAP and Keep Norwood Cool. Location, School Outfitters at Regent and Wassenway. Goals, to elevate creative assets to assist in the success and vitality of the Wassenway in Norwood. To create responsible fund solutions that reflect citizen values. To nurture ownership and responsibility in Norwood, Norwood for Section 2B. Ideation and visualization prior to construction. Harvest best practices and ideas for funding. Prevent heat islands and increase use of the trail. Reduce barriers to use of the trail. To look to the future in preparation for more cyclists. We are looking for citizens and artists to promote project engagement to residents, artists in the design community at large. Right up your alley, Mr. Thompson. Receive submissions, which can be simple photos, detailed renderings, or prototypes. Submissions could be solutions to problems, ways to create more fun, safety, et cetera. Morning contributors convene, the PM open to public for feedback. Green Umbrellas Trail Expert will be available for the morning. Thank you, Dana Bold, Lead Facilitator, Keep Norwood Cool. So, doesn't say what time, but it just says, save the date, August 17th. So perhaps we'll get more information as we get closer to the date. Yes, Mrs. Hanahan?
I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Bold for that. She has really been working hard for a long time on all of this.
She has. She's been working closely with folks on this Keep Norwood Cool to get citizen scientists to try to keep Norwood cool and stop the heat deserts that are around, school buildings in particular, so... Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other new business? Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind people, if they did not know, that the Valley Church has been having parties in the park this week. It's a little late for today. Let me check my notes. They've got another one tomorrow, 6 to 8 at Doral Field, and another one at Hunter Park, 6 to 8 on Thursday. I think they're doing bounce houses and snacks and stuff for the kids. It's a great, great way to get out and enjoy our parks, and I wanted to thank them for doing that for the community. It's a wonderful thing, and then let everybody know to go out and check it out.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a couple of items. One is an announcement, there will not be Award I Community Council meeting in July. It follows the same week as the parade in Coney Day and the Holy Trinity Festival, so the residents have voted to participate in those things, which is great. I also would like to continue on to the second. I'd like to schedule an Economic Development and Community Engagement Committee meeting for August 1st. It's the first Thursday of August, 7:00 PM. It's our typical time of meeting, first Thursday of the month, 7:00 PM. Looking for a head nod from committee members, see if that's still open for you, getting agreement. A couple of items that are pre-scheduled. Hamilton County, mm-mm, let me say it correctly, HCDC will be joining us. They're going to be giving a report out on the Business Support Program that's been in operation this last year. They're also going to be giving a report out on the status of a grant application the city made around planning. So they'll share on those two things. Also, at the August 1 meeting, will be representatives from PACOR. They will be talking more at length about the upcoming hiring fair, which is August 20th. So residents can go ahead and save the date for that, August 20th, from 4:30 to 7:00. And so they'll be here to present, talk more about how, how they are partnering with the city to make that happen and how that can be a benefit to residents who are job One more thing, and that's just a reminder, Cincinnati Shakespeare Company has agreed to come back to the city of Norwood. They are planning to be here August 3rd. It's a busy day around town, but if you're interested in seeing Romeo and Juliet, it will be available for free, 7:00 PM at the Upper Millcrest Park.
Upper Millcrest?
Upper Millcrest Park, yes.
That was fun last year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Mr. Vonsal?
Thank you, Madam President. So, we definitely have a busy 10, nine or 10-day stretch coming up here, including the Norwood Day Parade, Norwood Day at Coney Island. I guess it starts off on, so there's a couple of things that are going to be happening on something that I'm going to dub Norwood Week here. I think, I really think this should catch, because I think it's great. So the Friday, Saturday, Sunday before the parade in Coney Island, there's going to be these things called porch parties, where the Norwood block captains, you know, with a lot of assistance from Alicia Locke, they have come up with this concept of just basically hosting people on your porch. So just, you invite your, invite your neighbors, have them over, half, an hour, two hours, whatever, just chat, whatever, drink liquids, or do whatever you want to do. So it's kind of cool. So Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, there are going to be various porch parties going on around the city, so it'll be kind of cool to see that. On Saturday, though, and that would be July...
20th?
20th. There's going to be a cleanup of Montgomery Road that's going to start at City Hall. It starts at 8:00 AM, so they're really targeted to go from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. And there will be teams that are going to kind of go scattered throughout. So some of them will be walking kind of around, like, I guess, the central district there. Some of them will drive maybe closer to Indy Mountain Cafe, or Quattmans, or what have you. But it's going to be a really great opportunity to kind of clean up and get the city ready to go before the Norwood Day Parade. And then right after that, Off Pike Market returns to Mills Avenue, right next to Victory Park, and that will be from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Again, porch parties later that day, and then we'll have the course of parade, we'll have Coney Island, we're going to have the Holy Trinity Festival after that, so it's really going to be a really fun week to...
Norwood Day at Coney?
Norwood Day at Coney? Yes, yes, Norwood Day at Coney Island. So it's going to be a fun week to be a Norwood resident. I really do hope that residents get out and participate in as many of these events as possible. And I truly believe that it's the traditions of things like this that really keep our city strong and keep our identity strong, and I think that's kind of important for the community, so I'm looking forward to seeing people out.
Mr. Sankor? Thank you, Mr. Vonsal, Mr. Sankor.
What time's Saturday from Montgomery Road, you say?
8:00 AM, City Hall, 8:00 AM.
8:00 AM is the cleanup?
Yep.
Meeting at City Hall?
Meeting at City Hall, right in front of City Hall, yep.
Thank you.
I had the pleasure, and Mr. Sankor was there as well, just to let you know, this evening, Jerry Redkers, we call him Red, was honored today, this evening, about 4 o'clock at the Mini Auditorium. Mr. Redkers is a World War II veteran, and he, when he was 18 years old, as many young men did from Norwood, was called the active duty in World War II. He was... He was, as part of his active duty, was a prisoner of war. He fought in France. He was a prisoner of war. Oh, thank you. And he ultimately was released. What I learned was that he spent a couple of days in the hospital. He had lost 40 pounds a couple of days in the hospital, and he went back out on the front lines again, which was amazing to me. He was ultimately discharged in December of 1945. As the French were celebrating with the United States, the 75th anniversary of D-Day, the French government was going back, looking at those folks who had done meritorious service who had not been awarded the medal. And so, by order of the French president, Mr. Redkers this evening was given the French Legion of Honor Medal. It is France's highest distinction. It was, the Legion of Honor was created by Napoleon, bone of a parrot, and continues on to this day, and only by order of the French president is it given. And so, Mr. Redkers was given that medal this evening at 4 o'clock at the Mini Auditorium. It was very, very moving ceremony. He is such a humble man. The police and fire department found out about it kind of late by, like, how did we not know about this? They did a police escort for him. Of course, he said he hit the front porch and started crying. He's very emotional. I'm like, it's a gift from God, so just accept it. You're going to cry, you know? You're good. There was someone there from representing the governor. There was people from the Ohio Veterans Affairs. But the, I'm not going to say his name, because I'm going to get it wrong, but he was the Council General of France who presented this ribbon to Mr. Redkers. So, I have, I had already initiated a request to do a resolution in honor of Mr. Redkers at our next meeting. And Mr. Gary has already started that resolution, and I'll let Mr. Redkers know. He's going to be 96 next week, by the way. And I want to be like him when I grow up, because you would never believe that he's 96 years old. He's still, he's an amazing man. So, I just wanted to let you know that that took place. There was an article in the newspaper, you know, Friday or Saturday?
There's one again.
Saturday, maybe?
There's one this morning online.
And there was one online this morning? It was, the Mini Auditorium was packed. The fire department was there. They asked, the police and fire were there, so the police did a police escort. The fire department was out there as he pulled up. Everybody was saluting him. Everybody was crying. So, it was just a very moving ceremony for our citizen. He moved to Norwood when he was one-year-old, and he's never left. And several members of his family still live here. So, just wanted to share that really good news with you and to let you know that I have asked, I will ask him to come back at our next meeting in August to honor, so council can honor him. So, we have the program, and you might want to look it up online if you want to get more information about him. So, it was fun. Any other new business? Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Sankar touched on it already. I wanted to speak. We did have a successful Fourth of July fireworks at Shea Stadium. And I want to personally thank everyone involved, a lot of time and effort and money donated. The city is not charged for any of that. This is a donated effort. Again, it went off. It was a fantastic, wholesome, family environment, and it was just one of those things that you'd like to see here in your community. I want to thank the launch crew that shows up. Went off without a hitch again, so I just wanted to mention that. It was a great time. Look forward to next year. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Braden. Any other new business? Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam President. Did we want to go ahead and schedule a meeting potentially to, so we can consider some kind of a plan? Before the deadline that we have had imposed on us?
I don't know.
Do we do that before we hear anything from the mayor?
I mean, or do we want to pencil a date in just to know? I mean, I don't know. I'm just saying that it's, we probably should plan for that.
If you want to schedule a meeting, I know there are five Tuesdays in July, so July 30th is the fifth Tuesday. It would be the Tuesday after the parade, a Tuesday after we would normally meet. And that would be about 10 days before the plan is due. Don't know if it'll be available or not, but Mr. Clark?
Yeah, vacation, I have school, and I'll have to see if I can get --
That whole week?
Yeah, to see if I can get someone else to teach in my class, so I know that's been planned for over since January, so.
Right. Mr. Sankar.
I would say just schedule whoever can be here can be here, because I think, you know, we need to move forward on something, no matter what. So, I just think we ought to schedule it. You can always cancel it.
Right.
But I just think, even if we have, you know, five of us here, it's enough to at least go through things and possibly call another meeting or whatever.
Maybe another meeting, correct.
But I think we do, we should set something firm now.
Okay. So, is that your pleasure for July the 30th, the fifth Tuesday? Shall we call this a special meeting, or do you want it a regular meeting? Special meeting, we have to say the purpose. We can only act on that, or if you just want to move the regular meeting to the 30th, we can act on other things. Totally up to you.
I would say a special meeting, so we can concentrate just on one thing.
Okay. All right. So, then we will have a special council meeting on July the 30th at 7:30 p.m. for the purpose of discussing or reviewing a potential draft of the financial recovery plan. I forgot to tell you that I did cancel, cancel the Committee of the Whole Meeting tonight because Ms. Wallace Parton could not be here. They had swimming championships at, trying to find her email. She had swimming championships tonight and couldn't be here. I will just work with her and try to set up a time for another Committee of the Whole Meeting with her. But that, she just, you know, that's why we canceled the Committee of the Whole Meeting tonight. Mr. Bonzel.
Oh, thank you, Madam President. I just had one more item. If you're done with your --
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Were you finished with your topic that you were?
Yes.
Okay. So, at the last meeting, we had Emily Franzon speak to us about beekeeping and how it is currently prohibited in the city of Norwood. I'd like to request that we refer beekeeping to the Law and Ordinance Committee so that we can explore what it might look like to loosen the blanket prohibition on the housing of bees.
Did you make a motion? I couldn't hear. You just want it in there? I think it's fine.
What is, yeah, it's reworded, yeah.
So, Chairman of Law and Ordinance, is that you, Mr. Sankar? I don't remember.
Yes, ma'am.
You're Chair of Law and Ordinance? Okay. So, you're going to have beekeeping in your committee?
We'll be ready for it.
For special council? I said 7:30. Yeah, so the special council meeting is July 30th at 7:30. Any other new business? And we move on to communications. The first is a letter from Tim Maloney regarding bank reconciliation for April 2019.
Dear council members attached, please find the bank reconciliation for April 2019. Sincerely, Tim Maloney, Treasurer.
Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to receive and file the report.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzel. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Tim Maloney regarding bank reconciliation for May 2019.
Dear council members attached, please find the bank reconciliation for May 2019. Sincerely, Tim Maloney, Treasurer.
I'd like to note that the accumulated unresolved issues has been steadily going down each month. That's part of the, what the Financial Planning Commission has asked them to do, is to look at those unreconciled balances, and so that, these have been going down steadily over the last few months. It's your pleasure. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to receive and file the letter.
Seconded by Ms. Stevenson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Mayor Williams regarding Mayor's Court fines for June 2019.
Dear Madam President and members of council, enclosed, please find the report for Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of June 2019. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to receive and file the letter.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzel. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Kelly Brown regarding June monthly financial statements.
Dear council members, this letter is to let you know that the June monthly financial reports were emailed to each council member on July 3rd. If you have not received said email, please let me know so that I can verify your email address and also get you a copy of the reports. Sincerely, Kelly Brown, Account Clerk, Auditor's Office.
Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we receive and file the letter.
Seconded by Mr. Braden. Is there any discussion? Mr. Clark.
I just wanted to thank Kelly Brown and the Auditor's Office for preparing those. They're very thorough, and we appreciate those.
She's incredibly efficient.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there any other, please? It's true. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to receive and file the letter. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Jim Stith, Auditor, regarding 2018 post-audit meeting.
To the Clerk of Council, the 2018 audit has been completed by the outside auditing team. A post-audit meeting is scheduled for July 18, 2019, at 10:00 a.m. at City Hall. All interested should attend. Sincerely, Jim Stith, Auditor.
Mr. Thompson.
Move we receive and file the letter.
Seconded by Mr. Braden. Is there any discussion? Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President. I've never attended this meeting before, so a question through the chair to the auditor. Is this a meeting that is open to the public, as in recorded, and as well as all interested parties can attend?
Mr. Stith.
Yes, sir. I believe it'll happen in this room, unless something else is scheduled for that time, and anyone can come to hear. It's where they go through the audit, and they go through any potential compliance issues, and then the city has an opportunity to discuss whether we agree with those compliance issues or we're going to write a reply or a statement to them. It's valuable. We don't have them every year. The reason we're having this, this year is last year, we were told by the auditors that, oh, you guys passed it, looked great, no problems, there's no major issues, you don't have to have your meeting, so we waived it. And then the audit came out, and there was something in it that was incorrect, blatantly, obviously incorrect. And so, we had to go through contacting them and having them write letters. The state is actually, has suggested that we should have them go back and amend the whole thing, but it's, while it's something that really annoys me, it probably doesn't really mean much in the end, so just the letter from them explaining how it was making the correction was enough. However, we learned that we're not just taking their word for it anymore. We're going to have the post-audit and walk through it.
Thank you, Mr. Stith. Any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to receive and file the letter. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.